Okay, so thi- this particular system is just for emergency management?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's gonna handle downstairs, upstairs, our EOC, and that's why the state authored, authorized these two grants to help supplement it.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Dick, are you sent- are these essentially going from analog phones to VO- VOIP?
Yep.
And with the cost of the town, I see these grants here, so the cost of the town is six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one because there's grants to subsidize the other part.
Correct. And some of the things that we're gonna be able to save is that each of the firehouses have direct phone lines that are-
How much a month?
Hundred dollars a month. So three hundred dollars a month over a period of time is going to be able to be saved because we're going to be able to directly do that now where we couldn't before. And that's a, that's a special line that goes there that rings a klaxon in the firehouse, so when the guys have a call and gals have a call, they pick up that red phone and direct line. But we'll be able to do that now within this new system that we're doing, so funds, monthlies like that will go away eventually.
Is the reliability of this as good as the analog?
Yes.
Or better?
Okay. So there's three hundred dollars a month savings?
We're hoping, yes.
We're hoping for the fire houses, they're gonna be brought in the same system?
They, yes, but the firehouses don't pay it. Comes out of the 911 Center's monthly bill, phone bill. So we're hoping that that all changes and we see some reductions there.
So this figure covers the phones?
Equipment.
The installation, wiring, complete package?
Yes, ma'am.
Once you're installed, we could call you.
Hopefully. Most people use my cellphone. It's quicker.
And you answer it.
Did you mention that you're gonna be able to text?
Uh, nine one- yes, when they finally get the bugs worked out of this-
Yeah.
For you to call 911, you will be able to send a text to 911.
So you like, you could call or you could text?
Yep.
Interesting.
It's pretty, uh, pretty scientific, the stuff that they've come up with over the years. And this has been, this has been a long time in the making.
Mm-hmm.
They were supposed to have this ready to, to, uh, release over a year ago and working out the bugs that they found in it. It's taken this long and we're, we're scheduled in East Line to come online in November. The equipment's been in our, our, our radio room for a year.
Okay. This texting though, that's gonna be part of this package? It's not gonna be another software package we need or anything?
No, no. It's all, it's part of their software package. It's not ours. It's theirs.
And is there any renewals on, of this software or this is a one-time? Okay, thanks.
Now, thinking ahead to extending this or needing to extend this to Town Hall and other public buildings, we can anticipate basically the same cost?
Well, I, I, I think Town Hall is gonna be slightly higher. The police department was like seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars to do that, and we did not research the firehouses yet because there's only three or four phones there. But it would be much cheaper to go to the firehouses. But it's all gonna help once we do the nutmeg system, uh, the fiber optics and tie all those buildings together. We've just been fortunate that 171 Boston Post Road has been on PSDN, the Public Safety Data Network, for a year now. So we have a lot of advantages up there that the outer buildings don't have yet.
I would expect your monthly phone bill to go, not just that line, but voice over internet is just the T1 line you have or the Cat Five line, so therefore the phone lines go away as well. My, my business, we're switching over. The monthly bill's gonna go from twenty-two hundred to seven hundred dollars a month.
We're, we're hoping.
Yeah, so we should see your, your, your budget go down next year.
Well, I think that line'd go into another account. I have, not, I don't wanna say that, but I'm sure you guys-
Trying to reduce taxes, Dick.
I, I just have one other question. Um, is there an ongoing maintenance contract with this?
Well, AT&amp;T takes care of, of the 911 system or Frontier. The two guys have moved over to Frontier, so they're staying temporarily until they come up with some new scheme or, or legislations passed that says, you know, town's under forty thousand, can't have what we have, and they're not gonna supply it anymore or whatever. Every year we hear new legislative bills, but the rest of it would all be the same as what we do now with our computer maintenance. It's all that type of, of marriage together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
Mark, is there something that we're gonna, that the town could adopt to, to the VOIP?
Eventually we'll be doing that at the Town Hall, yeah. Yeah. Right now we could never do it with the, you know, we, you know, we just approved the nutmeg system, the fiber optics system. Once that's installed, we can consider it. We don't have enough bandwidth now to run the computers in this building, so, yeah.
Right, no long pause. Thanks.
Good question. We need a motion, I think.
Move to approve a special appropriation to CNRE Fund 32 in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars to cover the cost of purchase and installation of a new enhanced 911 phone system and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This is to include an account to be established titled Enhanced 911 Phone System in CNRE Fund 32 with corresponding revenue accounts for sources of funds, six thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars NSEP grant and nine thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars EMPG grant. In addition, a transfer from CNRE Fund 32 Account 32-70-300-500-100 in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, and this will require a town meeting.
Second. Let's put a second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, we'll move on. Richard E. Morris, Emergency Management Director, that's the title it says here. I apologize. Titles are important. Your job is important. You're also the harbor master of our town, which comes under this special appropriation for ninety-eight thousand seven, seventy-one dollars for the purchase of a new harbor master boat. Um, we are replacing a harbor master boat. We'll still have the same number of boats in the river. We're getting a, a significant grant from the FEMA, um, port security grant. We are a nuclear town, as is Waterford and New London. There's a, there's a security issue there and, and these three, our three towns work together more and more, uh, in drills and in, in, in increased awareness of our security issues because of where we are situated and the fact that we have so much shoreline. Um, you know, going from the bridge way down in Niantic all the way over to Old Lime. So, um, Niantic River, way down there, by that pretty yellow house on Route One. Um, so Dick, tell us about this grant. Uh, I know there's a significant seventy-five percent coming from FEMA. The rest is matching, which is split between the two towns of Waterford and East Lime. Um, so tell us, um, how this came about, what we, what we can expect and how we're gonna pay for it.
Okay. Um, back in April, ESF 20, which is the Marine Port Security Group that meets in the London County, was involved in grant processing. I became harbor master two years ago, and the boat that we currently use is, is very deplorable. Uh, it's unreliable. It continuously costs money for each of the communities to keep it running. This year we opted not to repair it at four thousand dollars. In April, they came out with a new grant, uh, submittal. Uh, we took the chance to apply for it. Uh, we put a lot of energy through April and May involvement, uh, working forward with a grant with Julie Wilson, Chris Taylor and myself, Dave Burton out of Waterford, uh, to see if we could be creative enough to write a grant that we could meet and be awarded the money to replace the harbor master boat. The current harbor master boat has a cabin in it, so you need to have more than one person on the boat in order to go out and check the morgans. Uh, we currently have two hundred and eighty-nine roughly morgans in the Town of East Line that we're responsible for. Waterford has about the same. So when you go out and check a moron, you gotta leave the helm, go to the stern of the boat, look at the moron, make sure that the hardware, the stickers, so forth, is on there. I thought that was a tremendous safety issue and I thought a safe, uh, a center console type boat would be more applicable to our usage than, than this Parker that had already previously sunk when it was a police boat. It's been retrofitted and, uh, it's just, it's a nightmare, that boat. So we went after this grant aggressively. Uh, we were very fortunate that, uh, we got ESF 20, the Marine group, to support us, as well as the captain of port out of New Haven wrote us an endorsement letter. We met the twelve functions that they require to have on a boat. Uh, within that, within that scope, that we would augment the police fire services. We wrote in the grant that we would support Parks and Rec this year. Uh, continuously, they don't currently have a boat to move their swim raft, their lifelines. They use a private boat to do this. This would relieve that problem. And that we would be able to, in large-scale emergencies, support the regional dive team should that need to be done, such as you saw off of Groton where the woman was under, drowned in the boat. Unfortunately, where you have divers, you'll be able to support that type of function as well. So the grant was awarded to us, uh, in, uh, in July, uh, and we are on, uh, East Lime's portion of that will be about thirteen thousand dollars out of the twenty-five percent. Waterford has already agreed to pay twelve thousand of it, seeing we're the keeper of the grant and, and the boat, that our share would be thirteen thousand. Uh, the boat comes with a trailer. It, maintenance is going to be easier to move, move it around, uh, keep it clean and, and service the engine much easier than the other boat, which was, had to be hauled, as you know. It's at Port Niantic right now, sitting there. That was a five hundred dollar bill a year just to keep it in storage there. So I feel that this boat is going to serve harbor masters for a long period of time. It's a good piece of equipment. Both towns will benefit from it. Uh, East Line morgans, as I said, if I didn't, take in about seventy-six hundred dollars a year in morgue fees for the town. Those all have to be inspected. They have to be pulled out of the water every three years, and it's the harbor master's duty to go out and make sure that work is being done. So that's where we are with the, with the boat, and I hope that you can support it.
We're paying, we're selling our twenty-foot, um, twenty-four foot Grady White, which is the spare police patrol boat. Uh, we estimate anywhere between eight thousand, twelve thousand, somewhere in there, uh, to, to relieve us of some of these costs. So we might end up with a flat cost here.
That's correct.
Or maybe just a couple thousand dollars dipping into the CNRE.
Yeah. We're waiting for the Grady White, local Grady White dealer to send their wholesale person out to give us an actual fair bid price on, on what he would pay for the boat.
Again, I'd like to reiterate, we are not adding assets. That, that, I'm not, I, I think, um, let's put it this, I just don't wanna add another asset into the river. Uh, but we do have three boats now, and this is an enhanced boat and a replacement of a boat. Um, so for that, I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you.
Dick, so basically this year we've really not had a harbor master boat?
That's correct.
Except for probably using personal craft like that, like I know Parks and Rec does when they put in. I would imagine too, as you mentioned, maintenance would go down significantly and not only for the fact that it's a newer boat, but not having a cabin, center console, maintenance, much more fuel efficient as well. So-
Yep.
This is something that we see some savings on from maintenance and fuel costs as well.
Fuel bills and all that, yep. You should, you should run pretty clean with it.
Okay. And it's avail- not available to, but you can always be ready to assist the, uh, fire department police if necessary as well.
People are all gonna be trained on it, that are, that are current boat users now that operate the fire boat, operate the regional police boat, the local police boat, and, and this boat will all be qualified on it, as well as members of the harbor, harbor management team with a plan in place for usage of that boat.
Okay. Thank you, Dick.
Other questions?
Typically, how often, if you have a functioning boat, will the boat be in use?
Well, normally you would like to go out at least once or twice a week to see what's going on with morgans, making sure people haven't been installing morgans on their own. Uh, there's always the phantom morgans that are off of Old Black Point and Tons and Giant's Neck where we say we don't have any, any room for them. And one of the big problems with that other boat was you couldn't get in close to shore because our river, you know, if you look at, uh, Smith Cove and you look at, uh, at the other end, the mouth of the Niantic River at Boston Post Road, it's so silted in over there. You can't, you can't get up close.
What's the draft of the new boat as opposed to the old boat?
The draft of the new boat would be about six to eight inches with the motor up on a tilt, and it's a hard bottom rig boat, so it's much, much more user-friendly for this type of work.
And you mentioned that it comes with a trailer?
That's correct.
So where will it be stored when it's not in use?
We'll, we'll probably store it at, uh, the old town garage or one of those locations. Maybe the lockup over in Waterford behind the police department. Either of those places where it's secured and, and we can get at it to utilize it, uh, should it, the need be in the winter months.
Okay. And the, up, the town vehicle suitable to tow it if you're-
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Folks down on my right.
What's that?
I'll move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seventy-one dollars to CNRE Fund 32 to purchase a new Town of East Line, Town of Waterford shared harbor master boat and create an account for such purpose and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Source of funds, seventy-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars FEMA port security grant, twelve thousand dollars Town of Waterford contribution, and twelve thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars Town of East Line contribution from CNRE Fund 32 Account 32-70-300-500-999, townwide project. Once the existing twenty-four foot Grady White Police Boat has been sold, the townwide project funds will be reimbursed with same, and this requires a town meeting.
Sergeant?
Wait a second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Good work, Dick. Thank you very much for all your hard work, especially on this project. It was not easy. Right? Right. Uh, the Town of East Line is currently out to bid to construct new salt storage facility at Field Services Building. We've talked about this at Eight Capital Drive, where the fueling facility to follow shortly thereafter. The Town of East Line owns three separate lots at Eight Capital Drive. Three separate lots, we purchased it. We chose not to combine it at, at that time, but we need to combine them now in order to meet the zoning setback and buffer requirements for the proposed site improvements. Otherwise, we have to have strips of buffer going through our, our very own property. So, um, who's, who's, it would be Mr. Bill.
Mark, I think you skipped ahead one.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Oh, did I?
Review of Roxbury Road.
Public Works review of Roxbury Road, Capital Drive.
Yeah, I sure did, didn't I?
No, you didn't.
All right.
Okay.
There's nothing. I don't have an E. That's what it is. Uh, Public Works Review of Roxbury Road, Capital Drive Sites. And this is what we were looking forward to anyway, so, uh, hi, Joe.
Thank you for having me. Um, it's my understanding the Board of Slemmen asked to, um, that I come in and talk about the Eight and the Twelve Roxbury. Just, just as a little, um, head, um, or background, obviously, we, we moved out to, uh, Public Works, uh, moved out to the Field Services Building and, um, at the Twelve Roxbury facility, we still have, uh, it's called O and M Building, Operations and Maintenance, the water and sewer, but that is, as Mr. Morris said before, considered the old garage, and then there's the lower property. I'm gonna refer to that as the Eight Roxbury. So, um, I have some information that I wanted to give out to you. It's, they're just pictures so we can follow along, and then I'd like to go through this.
Thank you.
How you been, John?
Good.
So, as it was, I believe my task is to go and look at the, uh, look at the facility and see what was needed. Now, I, I hope that bear in mind, I, um, when they did, the Public Works did move to, uh, Field Services Building years ago. Um, Mike Giantassio was a huge inspiration in getting over there. It's a wonderful facility. If there was specific commitments on the Eight and Twelve Roxbury facility, what we were supposed to do, um, I tried as best I can to look at what we needed to do to clean up the property, but if the board, um, had some other understanding, please let me know. So, basically, what I wanna start out is, uh, kinda break this down. I, I wanna le- quickly talk about the Twelve Roxbury property, which is the upper level, and then the Eight Roxbury, and then I have, uh, kind of an aerial photo of, of the rest. So, if you look at the first page, um, with the Twelve Roxbury property, um, looking from the Roxbury Road itself, we have done some cleaning up of that property. We've, um, we've, uh, we've, the hillside that's, uh, to the east of the Roxbury, uh, it's been cut and it looks really nice. We've been trying to line up all the plows. Uh, if you notice in the picture, um, up to here, remove the PD boat, that, the boat that you just were talking, uh, just hearing about that Mr. Morris was gonna sell, that's that boat. We'd like to leave it. I honestly, I'd rather not have any more boats coming there, but if the town so chooses, the whole profit is that people keep putting the old garage. So, anyways, we're looking for another spot for that. Um, as I said, the second page is, uh, the bottom picture on there is, uh, the hillside, which actually with the trees and the grass is, uh, reasonably attractive. Um, part of the, part of the element is that, um, there's a fueling facility on the top, and that's what that picture is right there. Um, what we're trying to do is move the, uh, we are, um, being sensitive to the fact that we don't want school buses having to go all the way out to Field Services Building, and we've already discussed this. So we're trying to go around the corner. So the picture in the bottom is the area where we're looking to put the fueling station. Uh, we have more specifics and a much more detail, obviously, uh, from an engineering standpoint of exactly where that's going, but that's just to give the board a, um, understanding of where we're looking to do it. Now, um, with that, we're looking to put a vegetative screen, um, on Twelve Roxbury, push back from the road so it's not any kind of sightline issue as you come out, but yet so that you can't really see that. So, on the top side, in, in our opinion, and I have to say, between the water and, uh, and the sewer department, they've done a nice job of trying to keep it generally clean, um, so long as we can keep after it and not just dump things there. The Twelve Roxbury site, I think, on, up top, it, it is, is, we're working as best we can, totally sensitive to the fact that we want it as, um, aesthetic as possible, but I, I think we, we've made, made strides in that, um, in that situation. The Eight Roxbury is a little different story, and that's where-
And that's the lower part of Roxbury.
That's the lower. That's actually, Eight Roxbury actually is best seen either from when you're driving on 161 looking down Roxbury Road or on Ro-Magna Road, and that definitely has, uh, be too desired as far as what needs to be done. So, one of the things, the first picture here is looking down. It's, um, I'm at the intersection of Ro-Magna Road and Roxbury. Um, some of the thoughts of what we're looking to do is, there's two white buildings there. There's, the one on the right is an old wood, um, it's a workshop. It's not being used by anything. It's also is the old, I guess, bus depot on the right side as where the, where the bus manager used to be. There's nothing being done there. There's cracks in the foundation. The building is in very rough shape. Um, and one of the thoughts that we would like to do is see that, that building taken down. If you can take that building down and you can rip the pavement out and make a green space between Roxbury Road and that other building, um, and also close the entrance. There's two entrances right now into our facility on the lower level. If we could take, closing the entrance on the, as closest to the intersection and put in another vegetative screen there, it would go a long, long way to, um, sprucing up the look of that facility. And I, and I understand that might have been sold to the board years ago. I wasn't aware of all the specifics. We're here to move forward and trying to get this thing done. I would tell you that, uh, demolishing the building is not something that I can just do. I have to budget for that.
Capital expense in our CIE, CIP budget next year.
I can't necessarily know exactly how much, but we are gonna, the first thing you need to do is you need to do a study to see any kind of contaminants, any kind of asbestos, anything like that. We could, that's probably around a thousand dollars. We'll move forward and do that through our highway budget to see, um, to get a report to see what we're dealing with so that we can get demo costs. That has to be done by a licensed contractor. The highway department can't go with our backhoe and whack it down. It's, that has to be done by a licensed contractor to take that building down. So-
Could it be teamed up with the fire department for training?
It's a possibility. Um, any, anything, um, I like, I like thinking out of the box ideas. I mean, this is all new to us, is even what we need to do here. So certainly we can talk to, uh, the, the chiefs in the town to see if that's, that's a, um, a good suggestion and, um, look at anything we can do.
Depends on what's in there.
Not only save costs, and also, it might be a good training opportunity for it. I mean, it will go up like this. So, uh, the, so it's an old wood shop, so. Um, the second building, and the one on the right, just to let you know, is, is a used building, and the children's museum is using it on the top right now, and on the bottom, the Parks and Rec. Uh, it's, there's two facets. There's a garage side on one, on the left side and underneath, um, on the right side underneath where the children's museum is, uh, is doing, um, the, I think, Parks and Rec through the-
Parks and Rec.
Regional Theater.
The Regional Theater.
Yes.
That's a viable building, and, um, what it needs is some paint and some TLC and a little care. Um, so that's something that we'll look at to see if we can maybe get the prisoners to paint, um, as they, they do a fantastic job in town, and that's a great opportunity. One thing, and I understand we can't just say, um, this is gonna be a process, but our sewer department would love to have that space and stuff like that. And I know Mr. Chiseman's on the children's museum board and will work however we do, but that's a valuable space. We can talk about what the best use of that space is, but it is being used, so it needs to be painted right now. Um, as you work your way across the property, um, on the other picture, it, it's definitely unsightly with that large sand pile. The town doesn't use sand like they used to with the sand and salt in the winter, so that's probably why we've had this big pile. But the intention is when we build out the Field Services Building, um, this fall hopefully, um, and one of the things is, uh, the next thing on the item is, uh, to combine the lots, is to pull that sand pile over to, uh, the Field Services Building. So there really shouldn't be anything on that side. That whole unsightly mess that's on the left side of that, um, the salt shed should go away, and we'd like to just clean it up, um, grate it off, lume it, seed it. Um, there is one element, if you go on the next page, uh, people always love our free sand and salt pile. It, it's hit all winter long. I don't want it, that to disappear, and I really don't want it to bring to Field Services Building because I really don't like to mix residents with heavy equipment. So we'd like to keep it here, but we'd like to move it, as in the picture, to the far corner of the property. So, again, we, we can clean up that area that you can see from the main road. Um, the la- um, this is just a close, the next page is a close-up of that building. Like, it, it looks like rundown, but it really is not. It just needs some paint and some care. Um, so, and then there's a close-up of that building that we'd like to take down. The last page is just kind of a little, very, very quick rendering of what could happen with, um, making green space and taking that building out, because if you were driving on 161 or you're coming down Roxbury Road and you take a look, the first thing you see is that first building on the right. If you take that building down and, and grate it off and make it green space, it'll go a long way to really cleaning up the site. So, those are the pictures. What I, I also tried to summarize with this, uh, the one, the eight and a half, the last sheet there, just kind of, that wraps up all the sites. It's a really good fit, picture of everything that's going on. It's at the top of the page. It shows where the fueling station we're looking for, the vegetative screen to block that so people can't really see it. Um, right at next to O and M, I, I made the boat disappear, uh, which would clean up because you can see that boat. Um, and then just trying to clean up the down, the, uh, the Eight Roxbury, the lower property, because, uh, right now there's just a lot of things going on there that don't need to be there, and, um, that was, that's our goal, is to try to make everything from the road as, as appealing as possible.
Mr. Salerno, ask your question.
Sorry. If you have one? Um, the, um, gas tank up at the top of the hill, does that fall under aquifer protection?
It's not in the ac-
It's not in the-
It's not in the-
It's not in the new aquifer zone?
No.
Okay. Um, the salt shed that's there, what's happening to that?
We, we'd like to keep it. It's a viable building. The, the shingles in the roof are really bad, and we'd like to, if we, if we decide to keep it, we'd like to re-roof it. But, um, what the goal is, is to try to clean it out once we get the salt out there, and if it's deemed that we can clean the thing out and so that we can store equipment in there. There's a lot of equipment that sits out, uh, during the winter, and it is, it, it's still a covered space that you could put equipment in the winter or put stuff in. I mean, it's a lot better condition than the little garage underneath where, right next to where the children's museum is storing. So, any kind of place where you can put equipment inside from the elements, so that's what we'd like to do, is keep it.
I guess my concern with that is, we, you know, we have one town garage now, so it would be nice not to have two with storage and, and such.
Well, you say it's, you say it's a town garage, but we're almost beyond, it's like, the, the town is now, I mean, you heard Mr. Morris say wants to put a boat here. Everyone tries to put stuff-
Yeah, I noticed that.
And it's beyond, it's beyond highway sanitation. Uh, the police have all their trailers. Uh, the Parks and Rec has shows, we have more equipment in this town than we have places to put it. And if you put a lot of this, leave, a lot of this expensive equipment outside, it's gonna, it's gonna, um, you know, deteriorate faster, and we're gonna need to replace it. So anywhere we can find opportunities to put mowers or put any kind of equipment that should be, um, protected inside in the winter or in the, in the summertime, um, would be desirable. That would be our goal. And now if the town ultimately wants us to take it down, and we're not gonna re-roof it until we figure that out, um, then, then we take it down. But we're trying to keep it because it's still a viable storage, and there's nothing physically wrong with the building except for the fact that it's, um, it's been there for so long, and as you say, it's a perceived keeping it another town garage.
Right. I, just sometimes the more storage you have, the more stuff you keep, you know, in personal life. And I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna, you're keeping stuff, you know?
I, we, we, well, well, here's a good example. That police boat. We, we would, I mean, not against, but we wanted to get rid of that, and it's been sitting there. And now there's an opportunity it can be sold. There's equipment all the time that's here. I mean, there is a lot of grants in town. It's fantastic that we get these grants for this piece of equipment and that piece of equipment. It has to be stored somewhere. So that's where, we're not trying to accumulate equipment, and if anything during the SIP processes here, we were very specific, and I worked with the first Slemmen, anything that came in left. You know, if we brought in a piece, one piece was leaving because we've accumulated a lot of equipment over there.
Okay. Is it, the, the, the building itself, the salt, salt shed, is kind of a- Okay. Is it, the, the building itself, the salt shed, it's kind of unsightly as is. You're talking about fixing up the other building. Is there anything?
Well, first of all, the shingles on the roof are unsightly. And I guess you could make a case that the building is, but if the, the building had a little care to it, it's not as unsightly. It's, I think, everything around it is so bad that it just fits in. If you clean up the side, the banks on either side of it and you paint the other structure, maybe we could stain it. We're just looking to try to keep it if we can. If ultimately it's determined, there's gonna be a cost to take it down. But if, as I said, if we clean that whole thing up. And the other thing is, and on this picture, if we can actually put some, like there's some scrub, was it cherry trees or, what's the trees in front?
Scrub cherries.
The scrub cherries in front of us. If we can take those down and try to put a better screening, like maybe put a berm, three to four foot berm, and then put some abracadis or something on the front side of this, then a lot of the stuff you don't even see. And it's gonna go a long way to also close that, that garage, that, this, on the second sheet, this driveway opening is about fifty feet wide. If you close that in, it's, and it's gonna go a long way to cleaning up the visual look of this building and this site. Right now, it's just all pavement and the pavement is falling apart. It's, I, I admit, it hasn't had a lot of care up there.
Well, I guess, you know, we'll have to look at the cost of the, the repair of that building, the roof in the future, but potentially some, if we are gonna keep it, some, like to see some trees on the side of it, at least from the site going out for Magna. Yeah, some in the front, but maybe on the side here. Maybe some arbor writers or something on the side there to hide that up a little bit.
We're willing for any suggestions.
The, the parking here, do we need, I know you're getting rid of some parking, but is that, do we need all that parking? Or is that just for maneuvering?
That's.
Is it gray here, parking, pavement?
It is, it is. It's as much to try to do some kind of rendering. We can make, we can make less. There's nothing that's supposed to be paved there. It was just meant to be gravelled. If we need to have more green, we'll make more green. You just need to, if you are putting some equipment in there, you do need a little bit.
You do need maneuver, but yeah, okay.
And, and we've used, I mean, this week, we used it quite a bit for, the last couple weeks, for staging area for repairing roads.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of, whether the chip seal or the tape seal.
The asphalt stuff came in and all that.
Everything was set, set down there.
Also, like, eighteen Asplunge trucks were there for four weeks.
Right.
That's where they staged and parked all their vehicles there and everything else.
And because of that, we talked them into taking down about six or seven trees in town that were our responsibility and they did it, so.
Yeah, they did a nice job with that.
Yeah.
We saved the town by about five thousand dollars.
So we still need some, you know, it's pretty crowded up at Capital Drive, up at the other parts. We need staging areas sometimes for bigger projects when the big trucks come in that we're, we have outside contractors or the tree contractors, et cetera. So we're still gonna need some of these big parking lots and.
The only concern about that is the location to the, to the brook, to Patagonia River. We need to be sensitive to what we store there.
Oh, we, we are.
We were sensitive for almost twenty-five years storing the buses there.
No, I know. We moved the buses because of that.
I mean, whatever damage was done, it had been done.
And actually, and, and obviously, you've been down there. It's just the whole.
But that may not be the, I'm just saying, that may not be the best site to store stuff. Maybe something we want to look at, do, do we want to store there that?
Anything would be stored would be in the building. And if we're putting, if we're putting materials like we did this past week, or the last few weeks, it was there for about three days and then it was gone. But there's just not a lot, I mean, if we stored all that stuff up at Field Services Building and we had a job that's like half a mile from twelve Roxbury, we were trying to give a little flexibility to the contractor.
Okay.
And, and.
Just like I say, when I hear paving equipment and stuff like that, I don't know how, maybe it's fine, but that close, the runoff is going into that stream.
And the one thing we did first is, is we actually, we did all of Ro Magna Road. We did all the driveways, put all the curbs. I mean, did everything. I mean, I haven't heard anything from anyone up there that was very happy.